On Thursday.
Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the March 2nd, 2021 Post Falls City Council meeting. Shannon, please note that all council members are present. Tonight, under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, a couple of quick announcements. The Parks and Recreation Department is hosting a spring craft fair next Saturday, March 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. at the Trailhead Event Center. This is a family-friendly event and admission is free. Also, daylight savings times, daylight saving time begins Sunday, March 14th. Don't forget to set your clocks ahead by one hour on Saturday evening. Council, tonight I have three appointments. We've had a vacancy in the Park and Recreation Commission, and I would request that council approval to appoint Christina Vranich to the Park and Recreation Commission.
So moved.
Motion second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Also, as you may recall, we had appointed an additional Planning and Zoning Commission member because we have Mark Latham, who is on the commission, but we are wanting him to stay on the commission until we get through the impact fee study because we need that expertise and that professional designation. And we had appointed Laura Whalen, and Laura moved and with COVID was not able to fill her term. So we need an appointment, another appointment to fill a position, and so I would request council approval to appoint Kevin Ward to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And finally, I would ask council to confirm the reappointment of Nancy Hampi to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We do have a short presentation tonight. Stephanie is going to show us a short video, and I believe this one's on impact fees, is that correct?
Yep. The city of Post Falls charges a combination of impact and capacity fees to help maintain the level and quality of services for residents as the community grows. What is an impact fee? Impact fees are one-time charges that the state legislature authorizes the city to impose on new growth. Funds collected through impact fees help pay for the cost of constructing infrastructure needed to meet the needs created by growth. The fee must be proportional to the impact created by the new growth, so before charging impact fees, state law requires that the city conduct a detailed impact fee study. The study must include an analysis of the existing facilities, the level of service currently provided to residents, an assessment of future needs driven by growth, and the anticipated costs to maintain the current levels of service as growth occurs. The impact fee that a new residence or business is charged is then based upon its proportional use of the new facilities that will be funded by the impact fee. State law only authorizes cities and counties to adopt impact fees to pay for streets and transportation projects and for facilities related to public safety, parks and recreation, water, wastewater, and stormwater. Local governments are not allowed to charge impact fees for any other items, such as schools, or to charge impact fees for ongoing operation and maintenance costs associated with the new facilities. Impact fees also cannot be used to fix deficiencies that exist prior to the adoption of the impact fee study. For instance, if the traffic volume on Post Road exceeded its capacity before the impact fee study was adopted, impact fees could not be used to increase the capacity of the road. Similarly, impact fees could not be used to fix potholes in Falls Way because those repairs do not add additional street capacity to serve the growing community. The money collected through impact fees must generally be spent within eight years or be returned to the property owner, and the money can only be spent on the category of improvements it is collected for. So, street impact fees can't be used to construct a new park or police station. State law also requires that if a developer is required to construct an improvement the local government is collecting impact fees to build, that developer must be given a credit against any impact fees it must pay. Post Falls charges impact fees for streets and transportation, public safety, and parks and recreation facilities. The city charges capacity fees for its water and water reclamation systems. Capacity, or cap, fees are buy-in charges for new connections to the city's water and wastewater systems and are another fee that the city uses to find balance between existing and future residents and business owners. Cap fees are calculated by determining the total capacity and total value of the water or wastewater system and charging each new user a proportionate share of the system capacity that they will use. Cap fees cannot be based on the costs necessary to expand the system. Without improved facilities, the infrastructure that residents and business owners use would not keep up with the growing demands in our community. Without impact and cap fees, the improvements needed to accommodate new residents would be paid for by the taxes and utility fees of all residents, including current and longtime residents. In fairness, new residents who are creating the need for new infrastructure and additional services should help pay to offset that impact. While impact and cap fees can't fully capture the costs of new growth, they help maintain the same level of service for all residents as growth occurs. Thank you from the city of Post Falls for learning more about impact and cap fees and how they benefit a growing community and its residents.
Thank you, Stephanie, well done.
Yes, very nice.
Very well done. Brings things down into a very easy-to-understand format. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Any declaration of conflict? Seeing them, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the February 16th, 2021, city council meeting. Item B is minutes from the February 22nd, 2021, joint workshop. Item C is payables, February 9th through February 22nd, 2021. Item D is memorandum of understanding between Bonner County, Shoshone County, and the city of Post Falls concerning collaboration and mutual aid regarding 911 systems. Item E is water, water reclamation request to dispose of records. Item F is consent to annex agreement with header properties. And item G is Britain Place subdivision master development agreement.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I had a couple of questions, just read through them, and I just couldn't understand what was going on with the memorandum of understanding. Had a couple of questions there for the chief.
Well, good evening, mayor, council, Pat Knight, chief of police. The MOU before you this evening is more or less IPSY, which is the Idaho Public Safety Commission, which we receive a lot of our grant money every year for our 911 center. What they base their funding plans are, is, or plans on, is agencies that collaborate together on projects. So, for example, the phone systems. The phone systems that we have in our dispatch center are able to take on many other agencies. Smaller agencies that may not be able to afford those types of facilities, we have the capability in our dispatch center. We want to be a, right now, we're a backup to Cootney County Sheriff's Office. Right now, we can flip a switch, if something goes on over there, they can come over here, coordinate out of our office. We can go over and coordinate out of their dispatch center. We're trying to build the same type of facility for Bonner County, Shoshone County as well. We do have the capability in our phone systems to be a backup for them, but to truly be a flip-switch system, we need to incorporate a little bit more, and that's done by grant funding, but to even get to that point, we need to have an MOU in place first.
So we're just backup?
Yeah, just a backup.
Calls aren't going to be coming in from those areas?
Absolutely not, no, and this is more of a satellite issue as well. So it'll, it'll actually incorporate some more, better feedback for folks that live over there, you know, reaching out to a 911 center. They might be right now in a place, if, you know, you call over to a location like that, it's not unheard of if you call the sheriff's office over there to have, if you're on a dial-up phone or a rotary phone, they still tell you how to get through to them. So, just trying to bring that up to a little bit more of the times.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good, have one more question. On the consent to annex agreement to header properties? I was kind of befuddled by that as well.
I can potentially answer your questions, we'll try it.
Well, normally, if somebody wants to be annexed into the city, we wait until they're next to the city boundary, and then they ask to be come in, coming, you know, be annexed. In this, it sounds like what they're saying is that we're, we want to be annexed as soon as the property get, or the property line gets to us.
Essentially, that's, that's correct. In this instance, the, the property owner is looking to develop in Cootney County because they're no, they're not currently contiguous to city limits, they can't annex into the city. As part of our agreement with Cootney County for our comprehensive plan and our area of city impact agreements, they need to be building to our city standards, and so as part of that, we've asked that they enter the, into this agreement. So once they are contiguous, we can bring them in and provide the services.
Will we still have the option to deny that request?
Yes, yes, all this is, is gives us the right to begin the process.
Okay, because that was where I was hung up.
Yeah. It still has to go through the, the same process that we follow for all annexations, this just gives us the right to start the process.
Great, okay, thank you.
Good, good question. Any other questions?
No.
You entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Tonight, we have no public hearings. Under unfinished business, returning ordinance is we have the State Highway 41 Widening Project Amendment Cooperative Construction Agreement between the city and the Idaho Transportation Department. Mr. Paulus.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Just a second here to pull up my PowerPoint. Last March, the city entered into a cooperative construction agreement with the Idaho Transportation Department regarding State Highway 41 and the improvements to get it from its current state to a four-lane separated highway. In March, they also started the construction of the north half of that project, which is from Prairie to Rathdrum, and then in October, they bid out the southern portion, which is from 12th Avenue up to Prairie Avenue. That project came in at $21.38 million, about a half million dollars under the engineer's estimate. A pre-construction meeting was held last week Monday, and the contractors looking at getting started at the end of this month with 300 days of work anticipated to get it done. There are no workdays identified for December of 2021 or January or February of 2022. When completed within Post Falls, we will see the reconstruction of three traffic signals, those being Pole Line Avenue, Prairie Avenue, and Hayden Avenue at State Highway 41. Two new traffic signals, one at 16th Avenue, the other one at Hope Avenue, which is halfway between Prairie and Pole Line, and then restricted turn movements at 12th Avenue, Horse Haven Avenue, Early Dawn, and Killdeer Avenues onto State Highway 41. With the agreement that we have with ITD, there was an estimated share of the construction cost that the city of Post Falls would provide to ITD. That was estimated at a little over $1.8 million. After the project came back, the numbers were higher. The city's share, following the same formulization that we utilized in the original agreement, came in at $2.56 million. City staff is recommending that we pay that amount and pay it all within this current budget year of 2021. We would do that with a first initial payment of $1,792,486.75, and then there'd be a second payment, which would be done prior to the end of this fiscal year. And that would be $767, excuse me, $767,0798.75. The reason we are looking at two payments, with the initial payment, we are receiving support from the Urban Renewal Agency of $558,951. The Urban Renewal Agency is also looking at providing us an additional $455,760.75. All of those dollars, both what's already provided and what is being looked at, can only be utilized towards the traffic signals at 16th and Highway 41 and Pole Line and Highway 41. Those are the only two improvements that fall within that urban renewal district. So when we take a look at the remaining dollars out of that $2 million, transportation impact fees with the initial payment, we're looking at $597,803.37. If the city updates their impact fees and all the improvement projects on there are approved as submitted, we haven't had the public hearings yet, but that's, so that isn't if, but if that's approved, by the time we get to the second payment and if we receive no additional urban renewal dollars, we will end up expending $1.365 million out of transportation impact fees. For that project, we're also looking at $377,394.38 from developer cash-out accounts. That's predominantly going towards the traffic signal at Hope and Highway 41, and then some improvements along Prairie Avenue. Parks Department, we're looking at $2,000 out of their accounts for irrigation sleeves that are going in on the project to help with future beautification if we get to that point. Originally, that was estimated at $7,000, so that was an area where we actually saw some cost reduction. Water reclamation, the ITD is going to be putting in a casing with a force main underneath 12th Avenue that went up in cost from $60,000 up to the $75,780. And then in the general fund, initially, we're expending with the first payment, $180,558. That's going towards the pedestrian facilities, which were added on to the Union Pacific Railroad Bridge overcrossing near Wyoming Avenue. Originally, that portion was estimated at $375,000. So that area, it's come down quite a bit. The remaining portion, if general funds was to go up to $492,596, that would be in the event that, one, city council does not update the impact fees, and, two, that additional urban renewal dollars are not available towards the project. It's a little bit complex, but that's the nuts and bolts of what we're trying to accomplish with, with the dollars and why we're splitting it into two payments this budget cycle. At this point, I can stand for any questions to help clarify, and if you want, I've got additional slides where I can go into the nuts and bolts of each improvement that we're doing.
Rob, I do have a question. Initially, you stated that the project came in about half a million dollars under engineer's estimate.
Yes.
But now you're telling us that the, our share of the project is going up? $700,000?
Correct.
Explain that to me.
Asphalt, rock, masquerading, moving dirt around, that stuff came in under budget. The traffic signals, almost across the board, were double what was originally anticipated. I have talked with ITD on this issue, why are they seeing the higher numbers? Part of it, myself, I don't like the answer, but it was a common answer. We bid it after coronavirus hit. Supply chains have changed, availability of the parts and getting in a timely manner have changed and have increased the costs quite a bit. One of those signals that we are participating in was bid prior to the coronavirus. It was a little bit higher than anticipated, but not the double that we're seeing on all the rest of them. The contractor is the same for both the north half of the project that was bid pre-coronavirus as well as the southern portion. So there may be some legitimacy to that, but I can't make that determination. Staff did go through the bids to make sure that what the city is paying for is what we agreed to. When you get into looking at the costs, it's almost an 80-page document going through every little nut and bolt. Traffic signals were split up into four main parts. You have the fiber optic communication for all the traffic signals to talk to each other. We are not paying anything towards that, ITD is keeping that portion. There are the pan-tilt zoom cameras used for surveillance. Since the city will have no utilization of that information, we're not paying anything towards that. In order to construct a number of these traffic signals, they have to put up temporary traffic signals, which are running between $200,000 to $300,000 apiece, to just be torn down while the ma, the new main ones are put in place. The city is not paying anything towards that. We're just paying for the traffic signals themselves. Does that help, Mr. Mayor?
It does, it just, the, the initial concept just didn't make sense to me, but I appreciate what you're saying. Questions? Let's go to Al, and then we'll come to Joe and Carrie.
Just clarification, Rob. So originally, we weren't paying like a percentage, like it worked out to about 10% of the bid. We were actually paying for particular pieces of-
We were paying for particular items. For example, on the traffic signals, the way that ITD has their policy set up, the local jurisdiction is responsible for paying their share of the number of lanes they have coming into the intersection. We took things a little bit different and negotiated with ITD. Take, for example, Prairie Avenue. There are 16 total lanes coming into that intersection between dual-left turn lanes and numerous directions and through lanes. What we countered with ITD is, well, we didn't want to pay 50% of that cost. We thought, we've grown into this area, there was already an existing traffic signal there, we shouldn't have to pay for the expansion or for that portion of the expansion that was pre-existing. So what we did was, we said, here's the total number of lanes, here's the number of new lanes that are being added from the city's standpoint, and that's what we're going to pay on. ITD agreed on that. In the old projection, that resulted in close to $100,000 in savings per intersection. You're still seeing that savings, but prices did go up at the same time.
Okay, I was as confused as the mayor, I was in the same, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's interesting to see a project come in, half a million dollars under budget, and then go, well then, why did our share go up? It's because most of where our share is, is in the most expensive little portions to make the system work.
Yeah, that's it.
Joe?
Are you done, Al?
Yeah, I'm done, thank you.
Nothing to make it feel any better, but I can attest that the supply chain right now is really, really, really screwed up. My day job, it's what I do, I'm purchasing manager for a contract manufacturer. And, long story short, what happened is, you know, the global supply chain basically shut down, went silent, mothballed for some of them, period of months for COVID, and a lot of the auto manufacturers, cell phone manufacturers, et cetera, canceled a bunch of orders, so that capacity just fell off like a rock. And then, as things rolled out, demand for those sorts of things, everybody's buying cars, everybody's buying RVs, off-road vehicles, computers, cell phones, everything else. So demand is way through the roof for plastics, all kinds of electronic parts, not just semiconductors, but even the popcorn parts, capacitors, resistors, everything else. There's things we can't even get at any price, it's just not available. Steel is way up, aluminum's way up, plastics, they had a, they were in a deep hole because of COVID, then that winter storm a few weeks ago shut down all the plants in Texas, which is where unfortunately, over half the stuff is made. So, I believe them, I guess, is what I'm saying. I know it's not what you want to hear, and it's not what I want to hear as a taxpayer, but it's rough out there right now, so I can, I can see how that's happening.
Okay, thank you. Carrie?
My question was about existing signals on 41, and you answered it, so thank you.
Okay, Steve, question?
Just after kind of listen, listening to Joe, we're saving a little bit more than half a million now, but it sounds like there's going to be supply chain problems, that this could be delayed, the process, their timeline could be hard to keep. So do you anticipate any of that savings going back into the project within the two-year construction period?
I don't see any of the prices changing. ITD has some escalation clauses in there, mainly for fuel price changes, but things like the traffic signals, they're not going to change very much. And with the supply chain, really what you see, what I would anticipate, based upon the last time we ordered a traffic signal, it was seven months from when you ordered the signal or awarded the contract until they started getting the parts for it. Now it's a little bit longer than that. So you're going to see a lot of the traffic signal work for this project not occurring this construction year, but more in 2022, which works all right with the contractor's proposed schedule, where this year, they're going to mainly work on building the two new northbound lanes from Pole Line Avenue up to Prairie, and then start to hit the southern parts of the project in 2022 in earnest.
Okay, so I know we ran into some difficulties with laying the new sewer lines in from unforeseen infrastructure that was there. So pretty much through those projects, we discovered any infrastructure problems that might come up that might spur extra costs to this project when they're doing it. Because as you know, you can go through a half a million dollars pretty quick on a project this big. And so that's my biggest concern, that even though we see a half million dollars or, you know, 50, 509 million, .59 million savings, that it could get eaten up over a two-year period in the project. So we don't really anticipate anything like that right now.
At this point, no.
Okay.
And a lot of the utilities are out there right now. Cootney Electric is laying new power, or putting in new power lines on the west side of the road. We've been at it for several months with putting in our new sewer line. So, you know, if, if you want to say ITD's a little bit lucky, they get to utilize all the utilities to do kind of the picking and poking and finding some of the problems ahead of time.
Okay. Any questions? Good.
So from that, I would be looking for council to consider to authorize the mayor for signing the amendment to the construction, or cooperative construction agreement with ITD.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thanks, Rob, appreciate the information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next item tonight is new business, and that's the memorandum of agreement regarding Spokane Regional Toxic Task Force. Mr. Boran Paul?
Good evening. Yes, mayor, members of the council, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Excellent. So first off, I'll start with an apology for bringing such a tongue-twister to, before you tonight, but I've come before you to talk about, and I'll share my screen. Spokane River Regional Toxic Task Force Memorandum of Agreement. So real quick, what is the RTTF? It doesn't get any easier to say when we put it in, yeah, just down to that, but we like to call it the task force. So the task force leads efforts to find and reduce toxic compounds in the Spokane River. Really, it's a group made up to collaborate, and it's made up of governmental agencies, private industries, environmental organizations, that have all signed a memorandum of agreement that forms the Spokane River Regional Toxic Task Force. So as in regional history, Washington, the Washington section of the Spokane River has some legacy contamination, including polychlorinated biphenols, and PCBs bioaccumulate in organisms, including fish. So often, the impacts of an industrial activity may outlive that activity for decades, and we may see the issues for decades after an activity has ceased. And these impacts to beneficial uses require some level of regulatory response. So the task force was proposed as an alternative to other methods, including a total maximum daily load, which at the concentrations of PCBs we're talking, would really be difficult. So that's why we, they proposed a task force. So the history of the task force, first meeting was in September of 2011, and Post Falls participated in that meeting. I'm maybe the fourth or fifth generation of, uh, employees from Post Falls who have participated. Uh, and John Beecham, um, has also participated, and he's available if, uh, other questions come up. Um, and out of that meeting, a concept paper was developed in 2012. That concept paper, uh, was formalized into an original memorandum of agreement. And that was done before, uh, really the Idaho Dischargers had any requirements to participate. And the Idaho Dischargers were largely ignored in that original memorandum of agreement. Um, we had a permit issued in 2014 and, uh, from EPA, and that permit did then include some requirements to, quote, "participate." However, participate was left, uh, pretty undefined. Um, so last year, uh, the task force looked at updating some of the language in the memorandum of agreement, and, uh, Post Falls, myself, um, participated in that update just to make sure if it was being crafted where it would take Idaho into account, that weren't wild, uh, requirements placed on us, uh, in that agreement if we were to sign on. So our permanent language in 2014, which we're still operating under, um, it, uh, outlines what the, the task force is. Uh, goal to develop a comprehensive plan to make measurable progress towards bringing the Spokane River into compliance with the applicable water quality standards for PCBs. So here's the language to accomplish the goal. Permittee shall participate in the task force. Um, it's left relatively undefined, as I said, uh, but based on the 2012 memorandum of agreement. And I want to be open and honest, uh, it does indicate that we shall not be required to be a member, um, just participate. And to date, we have participated, uh, more as an interested party, similar to just a general member of the public, um, than as some of the other voting members. So the updated memorandum of agreement, uh, includes some roles and responsibilities for everybody. Uh, make efforts to secure funding for operations of the task force. So not a requirement, just to, to try and seek funding. Um, and the Washington Dischargers do that quite a bit with their legislature. Um, so it's, it's an effort, it's not a requirement. Um, participate in ongoing, uh, functions, um, any subcommittees, uh, ensure regulatory concurrence and approval for data collection and analysis. And then responsibilities specific to Idaho Dischargers, if we were to become a voting member, would be to comply with our permit conditions, which, uh, was that last slide. So, uh, permit requires us to participate, and the MOA would require us to follow the permit. Seems kind of nice. Um, and then, uh, provide administrative oversight and coordination for operations of the task force. And, and that goes into helping select, uh, technical support, um, approving meeting minutes, all those things. So the, the requirements, if we do become a voting member, are relatively minimal. Um, so benefits, if we were to sign the memorandum of agreement, really the biggest benefit that, that I can see is it, it allows the city to directly participate in the decision-making process. So the memorandum of agreement has a unanimity minus one, uh, decision-making process. So if two members oppose a proposed decision, the decision would not be affirmed. So right now, if the city, uh, you know, and, and staff oppose a proposed decision, what we have to do is, is try and advocate with other voting members and say, hey, will you basically vote no on our behalf? Um, and so signing the MOA would, would allow us a little bit more direct, uh, role in that decision-making process. Um, as stated, it doesn't encumber the city beyond our existing responsibilities. So there's no financial requirement. We retain the ability to remove ourselves from being a voting member if, if we determine that is in our best interest. And it allows a consistent and coordinated approach to regional water quality issues while prioritizing our ratepayers. And I think a lot of the, uh, task force members get tired of us, at least myself. I often remind them, uh, that I'm looking out for our ratepayers. So with that, um, it's, it's a longer document that was included in the council packet. Um, and I didn't know if anyone had any questions, but I would stand for those now.
Any questions for Craig?
Well, good job.
So I would assume we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Thanks, Craig. Motion?
I'd move to approve the memorandum of agreement regarding the Spokane Regional Toxic Task Force.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Porter's?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. Administrator staff reports. We do have one tonight from Mr. Wilson on growth moratoria discussion. And I just, I'll start it out. I thought your memo was excellent. Uh, I thought it was very, uh, explanatory, and, uh, I, I appreciate the way you summed it up for us. But with that, I'll turn the floor over to you.
So I'll give you a brief recap for those who haven't had a chance to read the memo. Um, so we've all seen it. There's a tremendous amount of growth pressure happening in the community right now. I was driving to work last week, and on NPR, there was a story about growth nationwide. It's, in some ways, this is not unique to us. Nationwide, there's a tremendous, um, need for additional housing. Uh, property values across the country increased 14% last year, which is crazy. And then I get to work and I open the newspaper, and it says, here in Cooten County, they've gone up by almost 34% in the, in the course of one year. So while it's a, a national issue, we are really seeing it here more so than most other places in the country. And that's creating a fair amount of concern and, and potentially some pushback on, on growth. And so we've had some requests and some rumblings about can the city adopt a moratorium that would just stop the growth for a while or potentially put a cap on the amount of growth that we're allowed and have in any one year. Um, one gentleman offered up a proposal that was adopted in Boulder City, Nevada, a number of years ago, that caps the number of building permits that could be issued in any one year. So we took a look at that, and I wanted to give you sort of a, the whole big picture of how we go through these analyses. Idaho, unlike some states, is what's called a Dillon's Rule state, which means that we, on the local level, don't have any inherent authority to regulate unless that authority's been delegated from the state, either in state constitution or in state law. And the other rule that we don't have here is home rule, and you'll often hear about home rule states. Those states jurisdictions have the authority to regulate unless the state tells them that they can't. And so here, we don't have that authority. So we always start when we're looking at whether we have authority to adopt a regulation at, what's the source of authority? Where are we getting the authority to adopt the regulation that we're looking at? Uh, you know, I pointed to a couple of potential sources of, of authority in the memo. The first being Article 12, Section 2 of the Constitution gives cities the authority to essentially adopt pol- uh, local police, sanitary, and other regulations not in conflict with the general laws. So it, it limits the scope. It's for police, sanitary, other regulations, and then those regulations can't conflict with state law. So then you turn to state law and say, okay, is there another source of authority either that says we can do this or that we might be in conflict with if we did go down this path and pointed to the Constitution as our source of authority? In Idaho Code, um, Title 67, Chapter 65, that's the Local Land Use Planning Act, that's where we get all of the authority for local land use planning in Idaho. It applies to counties, it applies to cities. That's where all of the authority is located for regulating growth. When it comes to moratorium, there's two, two statutes that speak to moratorium. The first being emergencies, they can only last for 182 days, and it's only to deal with truly emergent situations. The, the language from the code, if I can find it quickly, um, the city must make written findings establishing that there's an imminent threat to public health, safety, and welfare. So there's, something really bad has gone wrong, and you need to do something to stop it while you figure out what the solution is. If you want it to last longer than, than that 182 days, the, the second section allows you to extend that for up to a year if in addition to that emergency, you say there's still an emergency, but you also make an additional finding that either there's going to be a comprehensive plan change or a city code change that's going to fix the problem. It's hard to think of how a cap or a moratorium on growth meets that pretty high threshold. We've seen a couple in my time here, in the 20 or so years I've been doing this in North Idaho, where there's been moratorium that have been successful. One being in a community whose wastewater treatment capacity was exceeded. They couldn't treat any more wastewater, and that's a life safety issue that probably rises to that level. Another situation, a number of years ago, was there was a landslide with a, a road sliding down, and so the, the community called a halt while they figured out, is this something that, how do we solve this so that we don't have, uh, people being put at risk with buildings, roads sliding off hillside? Those are the ones that I can think of locally that have happened. So it's hard to see off the top of my head how we would ever meet that, that threshold. Some people have suggested, well, that's, a, a growth cap isn't a moratorium, it's a different thing. It's, I have a hard time understanding that a little bit because at some point, for the first person who doesn't get that permit, to them, it's a moratorium. They're being told they can't grow. They have to, they have to come back, wait for a year or to, until that moratorium or cap is lifted. There's another con- potential problem that comes out of the Land Use Planning Act, and that is a, what's called a uniformity requirement. Essentially, all permits for the same type of use within the same zoning district has to be treated the same. And partly that makes sense because you don't want us picking and choosing. We're going to grant your permit, but you're not going to grant your permit. And so we have to treat all comers the same. A growth cap makes that really difficult because you're going to treat that, if it's, call it 25 is your cap. The first 25 are treated one way. That 26th permit, it's treated a completely different fashion. It said, no, you've got to come back in a year. You're not getting a permit. We're treating you differently than other areas. And those are, there are other areas in the like, Local Land Use Planning Act that I think that would also run afoul of, but those are the two that come quickly to my mind when I think about growth caps. Um, you also all know that we have an exhaustive list under the statute. We have to explain why we're doing what we're doing. We can only make decisions on certain issues. We can't make them based on items that don't rise to the level of, you know, essentially system-level decisions. It also potentially would subject us to what's called a regulatory takings analysis. You're potentially taking someone's property value by not allowing them to develop. So that's the gist of, of my concern. I don't think that, that a growth moratorium or a growth cap ultimately passes muster. Um, there has been some rumblings that we may see an initiative push for people wanting to put this on the ballot. Uh, you're certainly, the public is certainly free to do that. Um, in Idaho, it's an interesting state that other states, if there's a constitutional or a legal defect with a ballot measure, it doesn't go forward, that the courts answer, answer that question upfront. That's not the case in Idaho. Even if a ballot measure is blatantly unconstitutional or violates a law clearly, the courts won't look at it until after they, after it's been voted on, under the guise of they don't want to render, uh, an advisory opinion. They'd only want to answer a question that's a true burning question. And so you can put lots of things on the ballot. There was a ballot measure in some of the resort communities a few years ago, legalizing marijuana. It, you can put pretty much anything on the ballot if you can get the appropriate signatures. That doesn't ultimately mean that it will become law because at that point, it's subject to any challenges on its legality. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about moratoria, growth caps. I'll do my best to answer them, and-
Well, I, I just want to say I appreciate the way you've broken it down. I know we've had some inquiries. I know you've responded, and as you stated, uh, people are tired of growth, and some people don't like what they hear, and they may go the initiative route, which is fine. Uh, but I'm not personally interested in us as a body sitting here potentially violating a law, uh, you know, putting the taxpayer money at risk to defend. So, uh, again, I think you broke it down very well, and I, I appreciate that. Steve, go ahead.
And I, I think it's, thank you, Warren, for your report. Uh, I'm just thinking back, it's kind of ironic. When I was with the city in 1983, City of Corlaine had a moratorium because the wastewater treatment plant had, had reached its capacity. And I believe the citizens actually passed a bond levy in order to expand it, to increase the capacity so the city could grow. You know, and it's, maybe we've done too good a job or something, so. But, you know, I think that was part of the plan there, to plan ahead 30 years, 40 years.
And you, you touched on a, an interesting point that we didn't really get into in the memo that sort of gets to this is your staff, and I think most city staffs, do their level best to avoid getting to a point of an emergency. We have, and you, you see them all. We have transportation master plans, wastewater master plans, water master plans. We're trying to look out and trying to identify, what do we need to have in place so we don't get to the point where we have an emergency? And so we, we, we have those plans, we work those plans, we do our best to make sure that, that the capacity is there for the future.
Linda, do you have a question?
Yeah, um, Warren, I'm just wondering if an initiative did pass, then who would be the authority that said it wasn't legal? Um, who would bring that to the courts?
So it's an interesting question, and it's a lot of guesswork on my part. So, for instance, if there's a cap put of 100 homes and, um, a builder wants to build more homes than that, they could potentially challenge that regulation. A developer could challenge that regulation. A citizen potentially could challenge that regulation. Um, and then we would, it'd be to the courthouse to put it in front of a judge and ask the judge whether or not the, the regulation passes muster.
But it wouldn't be the city that challenged the, um, no.
Not necessarily, no. And honestly, we would probably be in the position of trying to defend that regulation at that point because it would, it would have the same force of laws as a regulation that you have adopted.
One sec, Steve. You okay, Linda?
Uh-huh.
Kerry?
Yeah, my question was on initiative, too. You said you were hearing, hearing rumblings, so specifically for Post Falls as opposed to Cooten County?
I'm hearing it in lots of the communities. Frankly, all of the larger cities in, in Cooten County, I'm hearing some rumblings that it may be coming to visit them.
So like a mu- mu- for a municipality as opposed to a broader area?
Yeah.
In general?
And I haven't seen it, so I don't know the answer to that. But my guess is that we would be asked locally to, to run an initiative in the city.
Yeah.
And you'd almost have to do it that way. If you're trying to address it county-wide, because this, the county has its own growth regulations, and all of the cities have their own growth regulations. So if you're trying to address it community-wide, you're going to have to get it in place in each one of those entities.
But I think that the growth that everyone has heartburn over, I try to think when I'm sitting in traffic, um, how really lucky I am I get to live here. But addressing this in individual communities, cities, um, will not make a dent in the growth that everyone is being affected by because it is so Cooten County, North Idaho, you know? So one little island of moratorium is really not going to make a significant difference, in my opinion.
Al? Well, thanks for the report. I, you'd already given me most of it before, and I appreciate that. So we can't really stop. We can't legally say, don't come to Post Falls or Idaho, right? Can we do anything to deter? So-
I know, like, you guys are chuckling, but-
Do you have strips, Pat? You can throw out.
No, seriously. Uh, you know, transportation is a big deal. I mean, and we had a ballot issue last year that was going to up everybody's fees 50 bucks. Is there any way to up only new residents' fees by, say, 100 bucks?
Probably not. So, um-
No.
This starts to get outside of my area of expertise and gets into more issues with statewide taxation. There's typically requirements that taxation be uniform, that if you're a resident of Cooten County or a resident of the state of Idaho, that your taxes are the same as the next guy's or the next person's. Um, so there's probably some issues with that. We do that currently to the extent that we can with, with our impact fees and our cap fees. We're trying to capture that. It's not a perfect tool by any stretch of the imagination. We can't charge them for, as, as we pointed out, O and M. We can't charge them for schools currently. Um, so it's not a perfect tool, but it certainly is a tool that we have, that we use to try to capture that. We currently have, right now, in the way, uh, property taxes, our budgets are set, we have the ability to, to take new growth and annexation dollars, which sort of has some of that same effect. I would tell you that there's legis- I would tell you that there's legislation pending that will probably change that, and will probably end up with the outcome that existing residents will end up having to foot some of the cost of paying for new growth. And so that's a little bit concerning, it's something we're working on, but we, we use those tools to the best that we can to make sure that growth pays for itself.
Okay. So you kind of led me to the next question, and that is about impact fees. Why or why not can't the schools and the county charge impact fees? I mean, is this something that we could see expanding?
We, yes, yes and no. So the county can, and we can enter into agreements with other taxing entities to collect impact fees on their behalf. For instance, the, the Fire District has an interest in expanding and being able to collect impact fees to help them. So we would need to enter into an agreement to collect them on their behalf, and the statute authorizes that today, that's something we can do. It specifically excludes schools from that calculation, and part of that has to do with how schools are funded. Part of it, I gather, there's a concern that there might be a constitutional issue with allowing schools to collect impact fees. That's, again, beyond my expertise, I don't really, have not really worked in that area, but I, I hear that that's one of the concerns that the legislature has at least addressed when they say that we can't do this currently, we can't give schools that authority, so...
So this might be too broad, especially for tonight, but, so, our impact fees are paid by the person building the house, is that correct?
Typically, it's, we collect them at the time the building permit application, or when it goes, the permit goes out.
So it's on a new, new house, new person coming in. Are renters, do renters pay impact fees?
The, the person who builds the, the facility is paying impact fees.
Is that commensurate with somebody that's building a house?
So, we're, you're going to have a hearing on that coming up here in the very near future, but yeah, you have to go through a whole analysis that essentially has to tie the amount of the fee that you're charging to the amount of the impact that that, that user group creates, and so that's part of why our numbers come out the way they come out, is we try to tie those together. Here's the level of service that we want to continue, here's the impact that you're going to have on that level of service, and so we're going to charge you your proportionate share to offset your, your use, essentially.
Okay. One more line, it's kind of piggybacks on what Steve brought up. We see, we've seen this, anybody that's lived in North Idaho's seen this ebb and flow over the years. Do we know, I mean, you mentioned 14% growth in the United States, where's that coming from? Is it coming from outside the country? Do we know?
I honestly don't know the answer to that, I just know, and I've, at least, I've heard from our planning staff that we just have a housing shortage, there's just not enough housing in the country.
But there was three years ago, five years ago?
It's actually been, it's an issue that's been ongoing for some time, it's just, it's being exacerbated now. You're seeing different locations taking different approaches to try to solve that. In some cities, Minneapolis, I think Portland is taking a, a look at this, a few places have tried to attack that shortage through zoning, they're taking a look at, taking their single-family zones and allowing duplexes across the board in single-family zones, just trying to increase the housing stock, because there's not enough housing stock. There's no uni, universal approach at this point that I'm aware of, but it's, there's just not enough housing out there across the nation, and for us, we're all living it, and we're seeing what's happening with housing prices, and it's largely, and Linda can speak to this way better than I can, supply and demand, we just don't have enough supply for the number of people who's moving here.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm more, my question then becomes, what about the demand? What will slow down the demand? If we can't put the brakes on, we can't deter them from coming, I mean, is this something that we could look forward to for the next 10, 15 years? Or do we see some lull in all of this coming?
My crystal ball is probably not the world's best crystal ball to look at this from. I don't honestly see much changing in the next year or two, I don't, I don't see anything changing, that's my crystal ball.
Well, especially if you look at some of the things that are going on in the Seattle area and the Portland area, and, you know, people coming up from, from California, wherever they're coming from, you know, they're leaving a, if you will, a quality of life, or something that they feel is too regulated, et cetera, and they found North Idaho. So I would agree, it, I agree with you, I think it would be nice to be able to tap the brakes, but I think that people are going to continue to come, and I don't, I don't know what's going to cause that to decrease.
The one thing we are seeing is, as the housing prices goes up, I mean, it's, at some point, people start looking for the next best thing, because our, our prices get to the point where they're closing in on par with the places they're moving from, and the value proposition isn't there anymore for them coming here, and so maybe they look somewhere else.
Well, Montana is experiencing what we are now, so they're just kind of...
They've got a lot of space over there, though.
The other thing we're seeing is, people want to see more jobs coming here, and we hear with some frequency from people who are looking to move here, that it's really difficult to bring a business here because the housing prices are so high that their employees can't afford to live here, and it becomes a real recruitment nightmare when property values, housing values get so high.
Well, to Alan's point, too, about the rents, when, the fees, as the fees go up, you know, do renters pay for these increases? Yes, they do, because the developer, the owner, who has paid the fees and built the multifamily housing, that's built into the rents. So, in essence, renters are paying impact fees, they're just paying it on a secondary level.
Steve has a question.
I wondered if it was at the same level as a homeowner.
Yeah, this is just a comment, and I'm just saying, I, I attended a seminar about 10 years ago, and the fellow talking was saying that with the advent with new technology, a lot of people are going to be working from home. So you could have a job in New York and be working in Kalispel, Montana, and he said the four growth areas are going to be Kalispel, Montana, Corlaine, Idaho, Bend, Oregon, and Jackson Hole, because of their quality of life. And I think we've seen through the coronavirus, a lot of the people I've met, their job's in Seattle, but they're working out of their apartment in Corlaine, they don't have to live there anymore. And so I think through Zoom, the meetings, we found, the companies are saving money, they can put people in areas that they can afford a house, and that they can do their same job just at home on their computer and Zoom, because they're going in, working in a cubicle in a big building on their computer, now they just do it at home, and so I don't think it's going to end this time.
It's an interesting time, and we're just going to see what happens.
I, I think it's, we're here for growth, and I don't think this time there's going to be an up and down, I think it's just going to be all up.
Joe.
Just to add a few comments to, to follow your question, Alan, about who pays the impact fees, and the answer is technically the developer, but often the people that own the property, the developers looking to buy, the developer's got a top number of what they're going to pay, that includes all the fees, all the everything. So they go to that number, they back the fees out of it, and that's what they offer the property owner. So the property owners will often argue that, no, actually, they end up paying it because they can't sell it for as much. So that's kind of an up in the air, there is no free lunch, a lot of people think, well, the developer pays for it, or, you know, with corporate income taxes, you know, the corporation pays for it, well, no, they end up, they end up paying less money to their workers, or the, giving less dividends, or charging more for their products, so, you know, it really comes down to the, the final person that buys it, is who pays it. Now, the other thing I, I see a lot, based on what I'm hearing from people, is that there are two separate but related issues that are kind of getting crammed into one. You know, because obviously costs are getting, are going crazy, and, and I've heard so many times that we've got to stop this growth because the prices are going up so fast. Well, it kind of works the opposite. So there's a certain number of houses available, people really want to move here, and they're, that's why they're bringing so much money in, and running the prices up. If we make that inventory of homes even smaller, that's, that's a supply and demand thing, then the people that still want to come here, those that have the most money, will be the ones that can afford to come here, and will drive everything up even more. That fuels the shift of property tax burden even more from commercial to residential, and, and we end up in this downward spiral of, of just increased costs, increased property taxes, particularly for residential and such. Another thing to address is what can we do to discourage it, but the only thing we have, I think, as a city, is we don't have to annex everything that comes up. So we just turn down a couple along the Highway 41 corridor because it's just getting too crowded in there. I think that's about all we got, unless I'm, unless I'm missing something.
So there's, there's other tools that we have, and we do use those tools, I mean, it's not even a year ago, probably nine months ago, we adopted some heightened standards for multifamily development. We're always looking at, how can we make sure that the product we're getting is a better product? And so we continue to look at our zoning codes and trying to set a high bar, and so you'll probably be seeing some more of those types of changes in the relatively near future as we look at, how do we make sure that we're getting the types of development that we think that, that you want us to have in the, in the community?
Yeah, and again, there's that, who actually, who, who ends up paying for that ultimately question, so I think we need to balance that, too. If, if we raise the bar so high that it gets to be that much more expensive to build multifamily, then, you know, the, the bare property owner's going to end up shouldering some of that, the renters can end up shouldering some of that, typically the developer, if, if they can't hit their line, they just don't do it. So we need to make sure we, we balance that, too, but, anyway, I'm done.
No easy answers?
No, there are no easy answers, unfortunately.
But I think, I think, Warren, I think your presentation tonight was a good first step, and I know we're going to have more topics on growth coming forward, and, you know, I would just like to reiterate, and I think that was kind of the gist of your memo, people want us to slow it, people want us to stop it, and people want us to implement actions that were taken in other states that are not legal in Idaho, and I think we just need to be cognizant of that. And again, they may not like the answer, but we can't do what's illegal, so there's ways to...
I guess we could go, we could go the opposite direction and make it such a horrible place to live that nobody wants to live here.
I was going to say, Alan, you just need to be crabber. You just need to stand nearby the border and be crabber.
That was a good information. Don't walk on the lawn, don't walk on the lawn.
Next item on the agenda is citizens' issue, and I understand we do have one, Shannon?
Yes, this is from email, it's from Jason Funderberg. I have two comments, one, we need to seriously put a halt to the high-density housing that is going up in our area. As a teacher at one of our great elementary schools, I see how mixed out our schools have become very rapidly, with no solution in sight, and also, as a delivery driver at night, I see how the traffic has increased exponentially, making accidents more and more common, especially when there is weather, which in turn has led to more aggressive driving and road rage, I'm sure. The second item I would like to discuss would be the addition of a sidewalk between Mullin Trail Elementary and Seltes Elementary Schools. This has been a problem for a while, and I'm sure I could not have been the only one to address this topic. There are several kids that walk to school in the air, in this area, and there is no suitable area to walk along there, especially during the winter months, which pushes the children into the street at the very height of traffic in that area, so I would propose a sidewalk to be constructed on the side of the street that is shared with those two schools, and it is maintained during the winter, especially for the children's safety. Thank you.
Thank you, good, good suggestion, especially on the sidewalk. Joe?
Chief, can you comment on, has there been a, a marked increase in the number of traffic accidents lately as the city has grown, or?
Mayor Council, I don't have a definite number on that, I think, you know, as the increase would push 40,000 people here in town, I think there's certain intersections that we work with Rob Policy, request from us quite a bit, we've got narrowed down to about four or five locations, I think, if I'm correct, Mark, that we've been working on, but I haven't, you know, other than...
I know I put you on the spot, I just wasn't sure if that was something that was on the forefront, or?
No, I mean, to me, I think they've been running about the same, I, but again, with me, I, I'm not paying attention to those as much as I am to other stuff, so I, I just refer back to some of the patrol guys to see what those numbers were. I can certainly get your numbers.
I, I think it'd be kind of nice to see if it's something you don't have to spend a ton of time on.
Oh, we could do it quick.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Next item up is mayor and council comments, and I think the only comment I have is, it does appear that spring might be on its way, although, although waking up to snow, was it Saturday morning, or whenever it was, you know, last week, may make me rethink that statement, but hopefully, we will see some warmer weather and get more people out and see things start to open up a bit, and hopefully with the numbers that we're seeing on the COVID cases, they were significantly higher than they are right now, it's been under 20 typically for the last week or two on a daily basis, so that's good. I know that they're doing a, a nice job getting the vaccines out, Northwest Special League, Cootney Health are, are both getting a large number of the vaccines out, which is good, so, I don't know if we'll ever return to normal, but hopefully one of these days we'll get back to something that perhaps somewhat resembled, resembles what normal was, so, I would just ask people to continue to be patient, respectful, and, you know, as we get to the end of, what I hope is the end of this virus, be patient, respect each other, just help us all get there, get there quicker and easier. Council comments. Al.
I'd just like to mention that I got to go to an alternative school here in town called Wired to Learn, it's a small school, it's an alternative school, of course, and do a Judging Their Science Fair, and it was really interesting, the kids were great, and it's always refreshing to see the, the efforts that our youth put out there, and especially in an alternative school, so, just wanted to thank those folks for inviting us.
Well, we did the, yourself and Council Boarders and I did the, we sat and listened to their presentations on how they would...
Civics.
Yeah, civics, how, how they would create or establish a city, and what they would do, and, I tell you, these kids did a lot of thinking, they was pretty impressive.
Yeah, it was a fun time.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys' time doing that. Any other comments? Do not need an executive session tonight?
We do not, sir.
So the next motion is?
Adjourned.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.